Just confirming the live stream. Good afternoon, and at this time, we'll start, please start their recordings. PC recording has started.
Hour is rolling.
Thank you.
Back, backup is rolling.
Thank you, and good afternoon, and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Parks and Recreation. At this time, would all council members and council staff, please turn on their video? To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices on vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.myc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you Chair Ku, we are ready to begin.
Thank you for joining our virtual hearing today before the Council's Committee on Parks and Recreation. I would like to acknowledge my fellow council members on their person. We are council member. One second. We are council member Vivera, council member Diaz, and council member Wadi, and council member Holden. Good afternoon, I'm Peter Ku, Chair of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, and I would like to welcome all of you to this public hearing, which will examine access to the Parks Department's recreational programs and facilities. Today, the Parks Department operates and maintains thirty-six recreational centers throughout the five boroughs. They offer services ranging from indoor pools and weight rooms to basketball courts, dance studios, boxing rings, art studios, game rooms, after-school programs, and even libraries. Recreation centers offer a wide range of programs as well, such as aerobics, tai chi, fencing, dancing, theater, and sculpture. And each center is equipped with staff that provides organized and free-play activities for all age groups. The city has long realized the value of promoting physical activity to encourage healthy living among all groups of New Yorkers. At today's hearing, we will examine the overall state of the Parks Department Recreation Centers when it comes to maintenance, programmable, programmatic offerings, accessibility, and member safety during the COVID-19 pandemic. The Parks Department has operated recreation centers since the turn of the twentieth century. They are hallmark of the progressive history of the city and its efforts to provide opportunities to all of these residents. The city should take every reasonable step you can to encourage more participation in physical activity and other types of recreation. Recreation centers are one of the major vehicles at the city's disposal towards promoting and encouraging physical activities and other types of recreation. Recreation centers are open all year round and during inclement weather or the winter months. Recreation centers offer consistent opportunities for social interaction and recreation to many New Yorkers who could be isolated otherwise. It's therefore crucial that the city do all you can to promote its recreation centers and ensure that they are well-staffed and maintained so the more so the more and more New Yorkers can make use of them. It's important that Parks has a plan to keep recreation center open and keep members safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. Membership and attendance rates have also varied over the years. In 2011, the membership rates at recreation centers were essentially double in order to close a $2.4 billion budget gap. The adopted plan consisted of adults paying $150, up from seventy-five for centers with pools, $100 up from fifty for centers without pools, and seniors pay $25 up from $10. Children eighteen and under continue to have free admission. In 2016, the council passed local law eighteen to address concerns about the high fees and declining attendance and membership rates. You created discounted membership tiers and fees for youth under eighteen, seniors, disabled persons, and veterans. This resulted in an almost immediate uptake in attendance. However, the most recent numbers indicate that membership and attendance numbers fell from fiscal year 2017 to the current one. For example, attendance fell from 3.4 million in 2017 to 1.9 million in 2020, while membership fell from 161,000 in 2017 to 142,000 in 2020. The recent pandemic has had a significant impact on attendance and members and memberships, especially since recreation centers were closed in March 2020 to keep them safe from exposure to the virus. Additionally, there have been concerns over the years regarding the maintenance and upkeep at some recreation centers. Nearly half of the city's recreation centers were built prior to 1950, which is now resulting in weakening infrastructures, assuring facilities, and moreover. Some facilities have not received renovations since they were constructed. This is causing recreation centers to close for renovations. For example, the Tony D'Appolito Recreation Center in Greenwich Village closed in July this year. The Fusham Meadow Corona Pond Aquatic Center, which opened in 2008, closed last year for renovations. And six pools in recreation centers throughout the city have also been closed for renovations. However, recreation centers are once again open to the public for recreation use and parks. And Parks has offered for a limited time free membership to residents who sign up between September seven and December thirty-first of this year. The free membership will last for one year from the day the individual signs up and will have access to facilities citywide. I'm eager to explore and update on attendance and memberships at recreation centers. And what else Parks is doing to incentivize members of the public to use those facilities after their reopening. I would also like to explore how Parks maintains and upgrades these facilities so that New York City residents can take advantage of our recreational facilities and maintain a healthy lifestyle. Also, the committee wants to ensure that our recreation centers must have resources they need to maintain their level of service and are able to grow in the long term. So many New Yorkers rely on the Parks and Recreation Centers for the services and programs that they offer. So we have to put forward every effort to maintain a dynamic recreational environment for current and future generations of New Yorkers. I look forward to discussing these issues at today's hearing and examining what other possibilities are out there, improving resources for our parks. Thank you. We are also joined by council member Gennaro Johnai, council member Cabala, council member Dinowish, council member Vivera, and council member Holden. I will now turn the over to our moderator, committee counsel Chris Sartori, to go over some procedural items.
Thank you Chair Ku, I'm Chris Sartori, Senior Counsel to the Committee on Parks and Recreation, and I'll be moderating this hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you will then be unmuted by the host. During the hearing, I'll be calling on panelists to testify, so please listen for your name to be called, as I will periodically be announcing who the following panelists will be. We will first be hearing testimony from the Parks Department, followed by testimony from members of the public. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask a question of the administration or of a specific panelist, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I'll call on you in order. Council member questions will be limited to five minutes, including the time it takes to answer those questions. For members of the public, speaking time will be limited to three minutes in order to accommodate all who wish to speak today. Once you are called on to testify, please begin by stating your name and the organization you represent, if any. I will now call on representatives of the administration to testify. Appearing today for the Department of Parks and Recreation will be Gabrielle Fialkopf, Commissioner of the Department, Margaret Nelson, Deputy Commissioner for Urban Park Service and Public Programs, Matt Jury, Director of Government Relations. And at this time, I will administer the affirmation to each representative of the Parks Department. I'll call on each of you individually for response, so at this time, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and respond honestly to council member questions? Commissioner Fialkopf?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Director Jury?
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will invite Commissioner Fialkopf and Deputy Commissioner Nelson to present their testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Ku, members of the Parks Committee and other members of the council. I am Gabrielle Fialkopf, the Commissioner for New York City Parks. I am thrilled to be here with you today, joined by Margaret Nelson, our Deputy Commissioner for Urban Park Service and Public Programs, and Matt Jury, our Director of Government Relations. Commissioner Nelson will be providing testimony for today's specific topic. But as we approach the end of this calendar year, this legislative session, and this administration, I wanted to take a few moments before to provide some thoughts on the successes and challenges experienced by the agency. First and foremost, I want to thank Chair Ku for his leadership of this committee and for his dedicated public service for New Yorkers, and offer congratulations on an impressive career in the City Council. We have very much appreciated your advocacy for parks and open space and have enjoyed working with you and your fantastic district and committee staff in a productive spirit of partnership. I also want to thank the other members of the Parks Committee and other council members for their service and for working alongside us towards our shared goal of providing New Yorkers with the wonderful park system they need and deserve. The council's support for the agency, including the Play Fair Public Advocacy Campaign, has been tremendously beneficial in ensuring that the agency has the resources it needs to get the job done. Mayor de Blasio granted me an incredible privilege in being able to lead this agency, and I thank him for his strong commitment to making our park system more equitable, inclusive, and resilient. Most of all, I want to thank our incredible team of dedicated park staff who keep our parks safe, clean, and accessible. Serving alongside them as Commissioner is truly an honor. These recent years have been challenging and complicated times for the Parks Department. As New York continues to grapple with COVID and the new normal created by the global pandemic, but over the course of this administration, New York City Parks has had some tremendous achievements, improving parks across the five boroughs, and increasing access to open space for all New Yorkers. Dedication to equity and fairness has been a strategic cornerstone of this administration and this agency. My predecessor, Mitchell Silver, launched the Community Parks Initiative at the start of this administration's term, targeting $318 million in investment towards sixty-seven neighborhood parks that had been underappreciated and disregarded for far too long. Upon my arrival, my top priority was making sure that the legacy of that dedication to equity would continue long past this administration, which is why I was so proud to announce with Mayor de Blasio that the CPI program will be extended and expanded with an additional investment of $425 million in new administration funding, which will completely reimagine, redesign, and rebuild one hundred neighborhood parks across the city over ten years. We were able to identify opportunities to create new green and open space with Parkland acquisitions that pushed the total of city open space to over the 30,000-acre threshold. Our Anchor Park Initiative revitalized flagship parks throughout the boroughs. The Parks Without Borders Program completely changed the way our parks connect with neighborhoods that surround them. And our cool pools turned sixteen drab and unappealing outdoor pool sites into vibrant opportunities for all New Yorkers to enjoy a fun and cool summer getaway. With the support of the council and Mayor de Blasio over the course of this administration, the city has invested close to $8 billion in capital improvements and renovations, representing well over two thousand projects of every shape and size, creating new or improved playgrounds, comfort stations, athletic fields, and courts, seating areas, dog runs, and waterfront amenities. Our commitment to community is more than revitalizing amenities. It's also providing vital infrastructure to neighborhoods around the city so they can survive and thrive. In partnership with our fellow city agencies and our state and federal partners, we're implementing resiliency measures and shoreline protection plans to combat climate change and severe weather. We were able to complete the Million Trees Planting Initiative two years ahead of schedule, and the Cool Neighborhoods Program has provided over $100 million to protect our city's tree canopy and plant trees in heat-vulnerable neighborhoods, which will save lives and make our neighborhoods more pleasant and comfortable. We have focused on creative and proactive efforts such as the City Cleanup Corps, which leveraged federal COVID recovery funding to provide the agency with thirty-two hundred new maintenance employees to pick up litter, wipe away graffiti, maintain parks and playgrounds, and offer tremendous value to our parks and public spaces when they were in dire need. We closely examined our maintenance and operations portfolio and brought on a chief operating officer to oversee all the borough operations and standardize best practices. We designed a more data-driven approach to manage our finite resources and found more ways to improve the longevity of our park assets through preventative maintenance. In that spirit of efficiency and modernization, our capital team has worked tirelessly to streamline agency-driven processes and facilitate projects that are on time and on budget. Of course, there is still more to do, and our agency will continue identifying ways to improve, so we look forward to continuing that dialogue with the council in the future. Turning to the topic of today's hearing, our recreation centers are an incredibly important part of our agency portfolio, making an incredible range of free or low-cost recreational, educational, and cultural opportunities available to every New Yorker. We have thirty-six recreation centers around the city, and they are more than just gyms. They are spaces where the community can gather, stay socially engaged, develop new skills and hobbies, and of course, stay in shape and have fun. We are dedicated to expanding access to the great recreational programming we provide for as many New Yorkers as possible. This means keeping our existing centers in a state of good repair, as well as exploring any potential opportunities for new facilities in communities that lack access to recreational programming. Like much city infrastructure, some of our facilities are considerably older, and that certainly creates some challenges. And the construction of new facilities is an expensive and complicated undertaking. But we are working to prioritize the most pressing needs and identify the resources necessary on a case-by-case basis. During the course of this administration, the agency has managed close to seventy capital projects at our existing recreation centers worth $370 million. And we've worked closely with DDC on several new recreation center projects, well over $600 million of additional investment, including the Ocean Breeze Athletic Complex, which opened to the public in 2015. I would now like to introduce Margaret Nelson, our Deputy Commissioner for Urban Park Service and Public Programs, who will provide more information about the value that our recreation centers are providing for New Yorkers and a useful overview of our public programs and recreation efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair Ku and members of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I am Margaret Nelson, Deputy Commissioner for Urban Park Service and Public Programs at the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. Thank you for inviting us to testify today regarding improving access to our recreational programs and facilities. We think it would be helpful to first provide some broader context about the recreational and programming aspects of our agency's mission. The Recreation Unit at New York City Parks falls under the umbrella of the Public Programs Division, which is also comprised of aquatics, media education, and education and wildlife, which includes our urban park rangers. Recreation's mission is to enable all New Yorkers to lead physically active and intellectually stimulating lives through sports, fitness, outdoor adventure, technology, education, and the arts. Recreation centers are essential infrastructure for our communities, providing space to recreate, learn, gather, and relax. Citywide, we have thirty-six recreation centers, which include our newest and largest building, as the Commissioner just mentioned, the Ocean Breeze Athletic Complex. It's an 135,000-square-foot indoor track facility that hosts over 175,000 athletes at approximately eighty competitions in a typical year. The remaining thirty-five centers range in size and are primarily older facilities with an average center age of sixty-six years, the oldest having been built in 1900. Many of our centers were originally designed to serve other purposes such as libraries and bathhouses, and then were handed over for recreational use and have thus experienced a great degree of heavy use and wear and tear over their long lives. Our centers offer a diverse range in both form and function. Twenty-one have gyms, twelve, as you mentioned, have indoor pools, twelve feature outdoor pools. Our recreation centers far exceed neighboring commercial fitness facilities in terms of character, culture, and community. They boast pools, gyms, multipurpose rooms, fitness rooms, media labs, indoor tracks, cardio rooms, and classrooms, and our loyal core of staff provide an inclusive atmosphere not often found at your typical private fitness center. At New York City Parks, we seek to provide lifelong holistic enrichment, nurturing New Yorkers of all ages and abilities. We offer a wide variety of programming, from instructional sports to competitive leagues, yoga to swimming, rooftop stargazing to painting, pickleball to double dutch, chair aerobics to zumba, concerts to lectures, roller skating to advanced Adobe Design software certification training, and many more opportunities for engagement. Additionally, we provide youth of New York City an opportunity to learn, grow, and develop skills and interests through programs like swim teams, after-school summer camp, and adaptive recreation for people with disabilities. Creating these types of life-changing, soul-enriching opportunities is our focus and is what we do best. We further expand our ability to make these opportunities available to all by working with partner organizations to provide specialty programming for New Yorkers, collaborating with such groups as the Public Theater, the Jazz Foundation of America, the New York Red Bulls, Madison Square Garden, and the New York Jets. As previously mentioned, we also offer opportunities for New Yorkers to enrich their interest and skills in media and technology, which is so important in this modern society and economy. The Media Education Unit of Public Programs provides high-quality digital resources and creative learning opportunities in thirty-three media labs within recreation centers, including certification programs for Microsoft Office, video editing and storytelling, photography, and STEAM-aligned classes offering 3D imaging and robotics. Within the walls of our recreation centers, we offer thousands of individual programs to approximately 140,000 recreation center members. In addition to programs, our recreation center members have access to over 1,300 pieces of fitness equipment that provide exercise and wellness opportunities in countless combinations. But at New York City Parks, we don't let bricks and mortar limit our ability to provide programming, and we have a plethora of offerings for all audiences throughout the city well beyond the confines of our recreation centers. Our mobile recreation programs, including the Play Mobile and Fitness Mobile, allow us the ability to visit various community events from April through October and bring these recreational opportunities directly to New Yorkers, reaching over 25,000 people each season. One of our most popular mobile programs is Movies Under the Stars program. This annual summer movie series, hosted in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, grants us the opportunity in a typical year to show over four hundred movies in our local parks. By partnering with private organizations, we have also been able to offer New Yorkers the chance to take part in our Arts, Culture, and Fun Program Series throughout the five boroughs, including tango classes in Washington Square Park, jazz concerts in Harlem, and Taikosa drumming performances in Queens. We also offer outdoor programming in our parks that is specifically tailored to youth through our Kids in Motion and Summer Sports Experience programs. Kids in Motion engages children in active outdoor play. In a typical year, this program is hosted at approximately a hundred sites citywide and has over 470,000 visits. Similarly, the Summer Sports Experience Program teaches sport skills, capturing an audience of young athletic enthusiasts who are interested in furthering developing their skills. On average, that program sees 34,000 visits a year. Another successful program for children, the Puppeteers Program, has a home stage in the Swedish Cottage in Central Park and offers free mobile puppet performances and puppet-making workshops citywide. Though youth programming is a priority for New York City Parks, we know that recreational opportunities are just as important for adults and seniors. Our signature fitness and wellness program that targets adults and seniors is the Shape Up NYC. is the Shape Up NYC program. Leveraging financial support from Empire Blue Cross Blue Shield and private donors, Shape Up NYC provides free fitness programming in our parks, recreation centers, and beyond in locations throughout the city. Since the program began in two thousand and three, it has received over one million visits, which is an incredible success. This program also features a Train the Trainer component, where members of the public have the ability to become trained fitness instructors. As you can hear, our Recreation Unit prides itself on offering a wide variety of programming to people of all ages, abilities, and interests. For that to be possible, we need to sustain our recreation facilities, ensuring that they are in the best condition possible, which we monitor with specific regular processes and benchmarks. Parks utilizes the agency's Asset Management Park System to request repairs and track maintenance and routine operational information. Over and above the daily monitoring provided by our center staff to continually monitor the state of our recreation centers, they are also inspected twice a year for safety, cleanliness, and structural condition via the Recreation Evaluation and Center Assessment Program. These inspections are independently administered by the agency's Operations and Management Planning Division, similar to how they conduct the agency's Parks Inspection Program. While we cannot simultaneously address the myriad of capital projects necessary to keep aging facilities in tip-top shape, we do invest the time and resources with care in order to better serve New Yorkers. To help improve the physical condition of our centers, we routinely focus on quick wins, small but impactful improvements implemented to improve the quality of our recreation centers and to enhance the experience of our members. Projects have included targeted facility improvements, improvements to a specific room of a center, or new equipment purchases. But beyond the everyday maintenance conducted by our staff, many of our recreation centers have received part of that three hundred and seventy million dollars, eleven point nine of which is council-funded, so thank you to all the members who have given us funding for our rec centers, of capital investment during the current administration to address structural and mechanical deficiencies, upgrade fire alarms, and bring buildings up to a state of good repair. In order to properly assess all of our buildings' needs, starting in two thousand and nineteen, an in-house technical inspection team from Parks Capital Projects Division began to conduct a thorough assessment of each center's capital needs, collecting the condition data according to a standardized protocol that allows for capital project prioritization and long-term capital planning. To date, we have assessed nine buildings using this process. Using the analysis, we have worked with OMB to address issues identified. For example, we recently secured twenty point seven million dollars to address an old and leaking roof that was causing water damage in one of these buildings, Hamilton Fish Recreation Center. Additionally, we currently have approximately forty-five active recreation center renovation projects being managed by our Capital and Citywide Services Divisions, totaling over three hundred and thirty-four million. Though the needs of many of these centers are significant, given their age, unique layouts not intentionally designed for recreation... Uh, hold on, I just lost my place here. Recent storm damage and heavy use, we are putting the tools in place to properly prioritize and plan for the future so they can remain robust and vital amenities for the communities they serve. Our recreation centers have also provided services to the community during times of emergencies. During the COVID pandemic, after recreation centers closed to the public, they were temporarily repurposed to serve many emergency functions, such as food distribution hubs that collectively distributed over forty-two million meals, COVID testing and vaccination sites, learning bridges sites in coordination with DOE, and hubs for our staff to distribute masks to the public. In addition to providing these essential services to our community, our staff served as social distance ambassadors, educating park patrons about social distancing and distributing face coverings. We also provided outdoor programs near the recreation centers as soon as it was deemed safe to gather. I want to take the time to thank our staff, who reported to work throughout the pandemic and pivoted their focus to emergency management. I am so appreciative of their bravery, flexibility, creativity, and commitment to our city. And when we began opening recreation centers in June, and by September, all centers that were not still serving COVID-related functions or closed for renovations have reopened, I'm happy to say. We're very happy to see New Yorkers, once again, able to turn to our recreation centers for the primary benefits they provide, improving our city's health and wellness with incredible recreational opportunities. Our mayor recognized the importance of our recreation centers and programs in his two thousand and twenty State of the City address by announcing a number of initiatives to expand our reach: the elimination of the twenty-five-dollar annual membership for anyone under the age of twenty-four, the expansion of late nights and weekends hours at our thirty-six sites, the completion of two recreation centers already in the pipeline, and the building of seven brand-new recreation centers in neighborhoods that currently lack them. While the plan to increase the operating hours of our centers was put on hold due to COVID, the expansion of the sites is moving forward. Over five hundred million is being invested in five new recreation centers: Shirley Chisholm Recreation Center in Brooklyn, Mary Calley Dalton Recreation Center on Staten Island, Roy Wilkins Park in Queens, and the neighborhoods of Soundview and Tremont in the Bronx. We've successfully eliminated the twenty-five-dollar annual membership fee for everyone twenty-four and under and are currently offering free memberships for anyone of any age who signs up before December thirty-first. So make sure to get the word out and visit your nearest center. We are always looking for innovative ways to increase our programming footprint, which I know is one of the other focuses of this hearing. Recently, three new field houses at Levy, DeMatty, and McDonald Playgrounds on Staten Island have been completed and programming has begun. Our Parks at Home, our hashtag Parks at Home initiative, was launched in March two thousand and twenty to keep New Yorkers engaged during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Through this initiative, Parks has delivered numerous educational, fitness, and wellness programs over Facebook Live, Twitter, and Instagram stories. Additionally, the Parks at Home webpage has served as a central hub to alert patrons of upcoming opportunities. In addition to our appreciation of the mayor, I want to thank all of the council members who are so thoughtful in their appropriation of funding towards our facilities and programming. This fiscal year, we were allocated over six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in council member discretionary funding towards programming events and staff to public programs. We greatly appreciate this funding and your continued advocacy and support. In closing, we would like to reiterate the positive impact that not only our recreation centers, but our entire recreation unit has made across the five boroughs. I would like to acknowledge, in particular, the flexibility and dedication of this incredible recreation team as they have consistently and effectively navigated an ever-changing landscape of practical concerns, policy changes, and safety considerations. Our staff worked tirelessly during the height of COVID to continue to serve New Yorkers in critical ways, and now they are creatively bringing back programming that will engage kids, help adults get fit, decrease social isolation for seniors, and so much more. We strive to bring free and low-cost accessible programming to all New Yorkers. You each have a standing offer to join us at any of our recreation centers or outdoor programs, which I know many of you have. And thank you for the opportunity to share our work with you as we serve New Yorkers focusing on fun, health, and happiness. Our staff will be watching the public's testimony via the council's livestream, but in the meantime, we will now be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and I will now turn it over to Chair Koo for his questions.
Thank you, Chris, yeah. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Firecalf and Deputy Commissioner Nelson to come here to testify and give us the really detailed information about the recreation centers. We are also joined by Councilmember Wambirma, Councilmember Levine, Councilmember Brooks Powers, Councilmember Bowery, and Councilmember Erwidge. So I guess I start some questions. I don't know who will answer, either Deputy Commissioner or the Commissioner can answer all these questions. So what is the current capital allocation for future recreation center projects and renovations?
Thank you, Chair Koo, for your question. Right now, we do have five rec centers, new rec centers in work for a cost of five hundred million dollars. That is in partnership with DDC. We also have, well, I should say during this administration, we have, uh, we have had seventy capital projects by the Parks Department in terms of maintenance for our thirty-six rec centers. That's for a total of three hundred and seventy million dollars. Twenty-three of those projects are complete and forty-five are in work. And then on top of that, we have our new rec centers, five new rec centers, as Commissioner Nelson spoke about, with a cost, a budget currently of five hundred million dollars. But Commissioner Nelson, if you'd like to expand upon those numbers, please do.
No, I think that covers it. I think the only thing it doesn't cover is Ocean Breeze, which was finalized during this administration, which was another hundred-million-dollar investment in recreation.
Thank you. So can you please provide a status update on each of the recreation centers that are currently closed and their timeline for reopening?
Yes, I'll give you an overview and then turn it over to Commissioner Nelson. We are pleased that we have twenty-eight of our rec centers open today. We opened twelve in June of two thousand and twenty-one, and then in September, we were able to open the remainder of our rec centers. We do have some right now closed for construction, five. We do have one that sustained damage during Hurricane Ida, one that serves as a COVID testing center, and another as a vaccine center, which we are thrilled to still, of course, be supporting the city in COVID relief. But as to when they're opening and the progress, I'll let Commissioner Nelson dig in.
Thank you so much. So, and again, I think it's important to keep in mind, I think as we all talked about, that our whole portfolio of recreation centers, because they're so old and need a certain amount of capital work, that at any given time, you know, ten years ago now, there's always going to be a certain number of our recreation centers that are closed for capital construction. And I think even though we try to minimize the amount of time centers are closed and try to do, you know, see if we can do some partial phasing so that we can keep some of the centers open or do work while it's open, that it's a symbol of our investment and wanting to keep these centers kind of functioning for the next generation by doing this investment, which does lead to some closures of some rec centers, you know, during the course of any given year. So, right now, the Herbert Von King Center in Brooklyn is currently closed for construction, and we are looking at a completion and a reopening this coming spring/summer, so that's great. Tony Dappalito, which I think you mentioned, Chair Koo, in your testimony, again, that's an example of a very old and aging and well-loved recreation center that we started to do some work on that was an exterior project. So we were keeping the center open while we were doing that project, but in the course of that project uncovered some structural issues that needed to be addressed. So that unfortunately was a kind of an unanticipated closure. But the good news is that we've done probes, we've identified with the design consultant what the issues are. We were able to move some money around from the administration to cover the increased cost, and that is in progress. And we're hoping to be able to reopen, kind of shore up this structural issue, reopen the center temporarily, and you know, and then have to close it again. So that's, that's an example of like what happens when there's been a lot of deferred maintenance, and now, once we get into a building, sometimes we uncover more than we thought we were getting into. So that, again, we're hoping to have that reopen for a partial reopening this spring/summer. And then there's going to be a Phase Two of that project that we're going to start design on, and that's going to probably cause another closure for that construction project. Flushing Meadows Aquatic Center, which you also mentioned, again, this is a relatively new center, and what happened is that there have been issues with the roof. So we had to close the center to put up some temporary netting. We're hoping to open that early in the new year, while the design for the kind of full renovation of the roof to figure, to address the spalling conditions. So it will reopen in January, February, sometime in the early in the new year. We will keep it open until that larger project starts, which is yet to be determined. Pelham Fritz is closed, that's in Manhattan. We're renovating the storefront, that was a planned project, and that should be reopening early in the new year as well, spring, I believe. Owen Dolan in the Bronx is kind of going through two separate capital projects. So I don't have a timeline for when that second project will be completed, because I believe it's in procurement. So sometimes that's hard to give an estimate. So we can get back to you and keep you updated on that. In addition, as the commissioner said, there's actually two recreation centers that were damaged by Ida. There were three, but we just opened St. Mary's yesterday, which was great news. Red Hook, we're installing a temporary boiler and then hope to have that open when that boiler is in, so we have heat. And then St. James had significant flooding in the Bronx, and that is going to unfortunately require a whole new replacement of what was unfortunately a fairly new HVAC system, and we don't have a time line yet on kind of how long it will take us to do that capital process. But again, I think this administration has invested a significant amount of money to repairing our aging recreation centers, and unfortunately, sometimes that leads to the public not being able to use those recreation centers while we do this work. But when they reopen, they will be in a much better place to serve the public for future generations. So we're excited for the long term of this work.
Thank you. So how often are recreation centers inspected to ensure that they are clean and that the equipment's in proper working order? Are they part of the part inspection program, PIP? And is such data properly available?
We take several different steps to make sure that our recreation centers are well-maintained in a state of good repair and cleanliness. It is of our greatest priority to deliver the quality programming that we do requires our facilities to be in a state of good repair, to be clean and welcoming. So we do take that, of course, as our first priority. And, and so as I said, we do that in several different ways. There are, of course, maintenance staff that are assigned to the facilities that are there full-time, cleaning and maintaining those rec centers. We also do, as to your question, as part of the PIP program that we spoke about last hearing, we do a we do a twice yearly inspection that is the same protocol as the PIP inspection program. It is done by the same unit, the Maintenance and Operation Planning Division. It is an independent audit and each rec center, it has a different name, but it is essentially the same program as the Parks Inspection Program and that happens twice yearly. We also instituted, and Commissioner Nelson spoke about this in her testimony in 2019, began a new program, a Capital Needs Assessment Program. And this is a program by the Parks Capital Team that goes into each rec center and does a full capital needs assessment. We have done nine thus far. And the first, the first rec center that received this assessment, we worked with OMB to fund the full range of capital improvements needed. They're $20 million at the Hamfish Rec Center that Commissioner Nelson spoke about. So those are some of the things we do. We also have a program or an initiative called the Quick Wins. And that is within the rec centers, small projects that we can do with expense funding that the team at the rec center can address quickly. New furniture, new front desk, some painting for the smaller project. So that's the broad strokes of our different approaches.
Thank you. For the most, for the most recent fiscal year, 2020, that we have data, the MMR indicates that 100% of centers were rated as having an acceptable rating for cleanliness and 90% for an acceptable overall condition. Now, can you explain in more detail what the inspection process for recreation centers is? Are they the same as the other PIP programs?
We do follow the PIP protocol, but Commissioner Nelson, why don't you give a little more detail?
Sure. Yeah, so that's reporting on what the Commissioner just outlined, which is it's kind of PIP for recreation centers. So where a PIP is a Parks Inspection Program. Recap is the Recreation Center Inspection Program. It's done by the same folks, so they're trained in how to do these independent inspections. And obviously, what they're looking for in a recreation center may be different than what they're looking for in a park, right? So in a park, they're looking at, is there a dangling limb? Or is there exposed something, wiring? In a recreation center, they're looking for, you know, exit signs, cleanliness. A big focus is the AEDs in our centers. So all of our centers have the AEDs and the recap inspectors look to make sure that those are operating and have all the pieces of equipment they're supposed to have. So that is what's reported in the MMR. And as you said, you know, we, before closure, I think we overwhelmingly were passing those inspections. The data I have, I have it for FY19. You know, again, they're all visited twice a year. And I think six centers failed, the rest of the 34 passed. And those six that were failed, failed were mostly for AED issues. And so that is reported to the MMR and it's also available on the NYC Open Data Portal.
So what factors determine whether they have an overall condition?
Again, I don't have their exact methodology. I don't have their exact methodology. We could get it to you, like the actual checklist, you know, and how much things are weighted. But we get the reports, the kind of the roll-up reports in terms of like the pass/fail. But we're happy to follow up with your office and get you more detail about that program, certainly.
Okay, yeah. For the centers, they are currently closed. Did they fail any of the inspections?
Again, my sense is that they probably passed the inspection. So the closures were related to things that were not on the inspection checklist. But we can go back and crosswalk that to just get a sense. I think your, your sense is like, were things getting flagged that then led to the closure? I think for the most part, our capital, our capital inspections are things like are larger structural issues, which aren't necessarily the kinds of things that the recap inspections are looking at. I think the recap inspections are much more like health and safety violations, cleanliness. They don't, they don't evaluate structural conditions, like is the roof old? And is, you know, leaking and needs to be replaced? And then that becomes a capital project, if that's helpful. But we can certainly go back and check and get you the statistics for the recap for the centers that are now closed.
Okay, thanks. So what is the process that the parks use to bring a recreation center back up to cleanliness standards when it does not meet standards during an inspection? So how you, what's the process to bring you up to their cleanliness standard?
Thank you. You know, I think once we get the report, then we have center managers, we have chiefs of recreation, we have a whole kind of structure that makes sure we're looking at the results of the report and taking action. I would like to also say that our center managers who are onsite every day, you know, one of their jobs is to kind of walk through the center on a daily basis and check for cleanliness. And, and I think that especially as we reopened our centers in this, in, you know, June and in the summer, our staff were very, very careful and conscientious to really bring the centers back at a whole new kind of higher standard even of cleanliness than we had before because of the concern about COVID. So, you know, we made sure we had maintenance staff. We made sure we're doing regular cleaning. We had definitely COVID safety protocols. So I just, I commend our staff for developing the protocols to bring our recreation centers back safely for the public and make sure they are meeting, you know, a high level of cleanliness.
Okay, thanks. So who develops and implements the many different types of programming at the centers? Do individual centers have their own authority over programming? Or does parks take on the more hands-on role?
So, so basically, the centers have a lot of flexibility to develop their own programming. They develop program schedules in advance of, you know, we kind of set things into quarters or thirds or different kind of sections of the year. So you'll have folks who are in a center who might propose different kinds of programming or maybe that programming has existed in the past and has been very successful. So they'll develop a tentative schedule that will be discussed with the supervision, which are the recreation chiefs for each of the boroughs. And then that can go all the way up to the Assistant Commissioner Emily Chase and myself, although I don't tend to get involved in very detailed programming decisions. Although I like to, I think overall as a division, we try to look at making sure we have a diversity of programming, that we're serving different ages, that we're serving different interests. I think we try to make sure that as we see kind of new, new programs or new interest in certain kinds of sports or activities, we try to meet that demand. We certainly are open to member suggestions about what they would like to see. I think we engage with elected officials about what they would like to see. So for example, as pickleball has become more popular, you know, our rec centers were kind of in the forefront of using gym space to create some time for pickleball. And now we're creating more outdoor sites as when we closed our recreation centers, then people were still looking to play pickleball outside. So now we have more outdoor pickleball courts. So I think it's a very dynamic process. I think we provide a lot of really great variety of programming. But certainly, if any of you here have ideas or you hear from your constituents about some sort of gap in, in programming, we would love to hear from you. And I, and I would say that, you know, as we are restarting, we are also trying to be careful, given the COVID safety protocols, to not over-schedule or create crowding conditions. So I think we're in the process of kind of ramping up a public programming schedule in a careful way so that we don't have too many people in the center at once to be able to maintain that social distancing, which is recommended at this time. So that's another consideration. So while we might open a center and people can use the different rooms, it might not be as programmed as yet as it was in the past.
So, so for individuals who are like experts on some like tired activities, say an individual was really good in Tai Chi. And if they want to offer to teach their skill to a local recreation center, do they approach a local center or do they have to approach the central office?
I think either way would be fine. And certainly you should feel free to have people do that. I think we have to, we have certain volunteer standards. We just, you know, people would have to go through a background check. There are certain rules about having volunteers in our buildings, working with children. So it's a careful process. And, you know, usually we rely on our own staff to do official programming, but we're always open to partnering with organizations traditionally, you know, and volunteer. So I wouldn't want to say no, I would want to say, we're certainly open to exploring that. And, and in fact, we probably have some examples of that. I just don't have that in front of me to share today, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, so all the instructors of activities, are there staff at the park department? Are they regular staff? Or they are like contractors?
Yeah, so primarily, no, primarily, all of our programs offered at our recreation centers or the vast majority are done by our own staff. We have recreation specialists, we have recreation supervisors. We have different folks who are trained and knowledgeable about how to put together a curriculum and how to deliver a curriculum of all sorts of different types of programming. We also do, as I said in my testimony, partner with organizations and to, you know, we'll partner together to create some programs that maybe we couldn't offer on our own or an organization is interested in working with us to, to offer to the public. But in any partnership with an organization that comes in, it would have to be, you know, open to all of our recreation center members. You have to be free, it becomes part of our programming. We don't rent out our space to organizations for them to do their own programming in.
So those are, those are strictly volunteers, right? You can pay them for outside people who come in to teach?
Right, usually our partnerships, like, you know, we have a partnership with the Public Theater. We have a partnership with, hold on, I think I have a list here. You know, we have, mostly it's an organization looking to partner with us and providing free programming. So there are some cases where we will pay for programming because we're doing it in partnership with an organization. So they might, so for example, like the Jazz Foundation of America, you know, we have a partnership with them and they will provide, you know, I think it's like, you know, about 10 free concerts during the year, but there might be a few other concerts that we help subsidize, you know, to get those few extra concerts. So it's primarily, we're not paying organizations to come in and do programming. They're, you know, it's a, it's a partnership where they're bringing the programming and it's an added, you know, extra great opportunity for our members to experience different kinds of programming.
So are staff at recreation centers able to communicate in multiple languages to serve their local communities? Now, I have heard stories of New Yorkers not able to participate in center activities due to language barriers, no?
I think we definitely strive. We have a very diverse workforce in our public programs and recreation division. So I do think we have a lot of programs where the instructor can speak more than one language. But again, I think it's something that we should always kind of look at doing kind of more of where we can. I mean, so if you have ideas or you certainly hear of any specific concerns for a center, we would be totally interested in working with you to see what more can be done at that center.
Sure, yeah, because like say, for example, Flushing, right? More than half the population here are Asians, you know? So you will be better than, you have staff that like speak Mandarin or Koreans, you know, to help the local people, especially citizens. They want them to come to participate. They don't speak the language, so, and they don't want to come. But if you speak the language, of course, they will come.
Certainly, I think we agree with that importance and focus that we'd be, we'd like to discuss that more with you and we agree of that importance for sure.
Okay, so this is simple. For someone who's a member of one recreation center, does that give them access to all centers or only one specific center? When you sign up, it's only one center or you can go to all centers?
So, so we have two general kinds of membership. We have a membership that allows access to all recreation centers that, but that don't have a pool. And so for adults, that's $100 a year. And then there's a membership that allows you access to all recreation centers, including those with a pool. And that is $150 a year. But again, remember, most people are paying far less than that. That's just for the strictly adult population.
Okay, so I have a local question.
And we think that's a very...
Well, well enough, I mean, it's a fair price, yeah, yeah. For seniors, it's much cheaper, right? It's $25 or something?
Exactly. I mean, again, $150 for access to any recreation center in the city that has a pool or not a pool is that we think is a great deal. You know, it's a great bargain, it's a great deal. We think we give great programming. And again, I think as you referenced in your testimony, when that increase went into effect in 2011, that did have a drop in our membership. But I think, you know, now that price has held for the past 10 years, you know, inflation has actually made that price a lot less than it was when that was first implemented. So again...
And we do offer a discount. Oh, I'm sorry, Chair, we do offer a discount as well with ID NYC to the regular membership as well.
And now it's free before the end of the year, right? Then you can sign up now?
Yes.
So I'll probably go after this hearing, let's sign up.
Yes, please help us, you know, please help us get the word out. I think that would be really helpful because, again, knowing, you know, people were just kind of, the pandemic, I think, is, you know, a lot of people aren't necessarily ready to come indoors for programming. But now is the time to get that free membership. Even if, you know, you're going to wait a month or two to start coming indoors for your recreation, definitely want to get that word out and would appreciate the council's help on that.
So the next question is particularly local, to our residents around here. So every year during the US Open, the USTA is allowed to make use of the parking areas adjacent to the Flushing Meadow pools and link, which is used by many members in my district while utilizing the recreation center. So during the two weeks of the US Open, they allow access to this area to park their vehicles. I think this is a little bit unfair to these city residents and would like to know how the city can address the problem.
We would be happy to discuss that with you further and find a solution for everyone. We'll make a note and circle back on that if that's okay, Chair.
Sure, sure, okay, yeah, we talk offline, yeah. So all recreation centers that meet the park department definition, So uh, all recreation centers that meet the park department definition, uh, one solely by park department, are there any recreation facilities that are essentially operating as a concession? And does parks consider such facilities to be recreation centers?
I'll, I can take this, I think. So when we talk about our thirty six recreation centers, those are all centers that we own the buildings and we are running as the Parks Department. I think there are some legacy buildings that are owned by the Parks Department that other organizations are running as recreation centers or community service facilities. It's it's only a few. I think we can get you that list. Um, I think there might also be, you know, again, our concessions, our revenue division also runs concessions and um other programming that people, organizations compete to have that concession and then they offer fee based programming out of certain um buildings or, uh, you know, ten, we have tennis centers. We have other kinds of recreational facilities that are run by organizations that have have a an agreement with us to do that. But so for example, we have a building in the Bronx in Malali Park that is a building that is, uh, we have a license agreement with a nonprofit organization, I believe it's Scan, uh, and they run a series of programs in that building. And but we don't call it our recreation center.
Okay, thank you. So what is the, yes, yes, yeah. What is the Americans with Disabilities ADA compliance record for recreation centers? How do they rate when it comes to overall disability access? Uh, were all centers ADA compliant?
So so all of our centers are ADA accessible to get in the building, to get up to the building. Many of them have elevators. I think what's important to, and we're constantly looking to increase our accessibility into all spaces in our recreation centers for members. But ADA accessibility really kicks in when you're doing a renovation. And as we all know, many of our centers are so old, right? So they are are compliant with whatever regulations exist for those buildings. But when they go through a renovation, they would have to be then ADA compliant to the new standards. But again, it's something the Parks Department feels very strongly about. We have, uh, you know, an ADA compliance officer. We are always working to make improvements to our parks and our comfort stations and our recreation centers and other public facing facilities to make them as accessible as possible.
Thank you. I think I finished my questions. I will ask other members of this committee to ask questions. Chris, I will turn this over to you and and you will call on members who use the sign up, the white, the the hand sign up thing to to ask questions, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. At this point, I would ask any council members who wish to ask a question to please use the Zoom raise hand function if you have a question for any representative of the Parks Department. At this point, Chair, there are no other members who have any questions, so we can turn it back to you if you have additional questions or we can move on to testimony from members of the public who have registered to speak.
Uh, then we can move to public testimony.
Okay. Okay, very well. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have, thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Thank you. Thank you. As the Chair mentioned, we will now hear testimony from members of the public who have registered to speak. And as I also previously mentioned, unlike our typical council hearings, we'll be calling on individuals one by one to testify and each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. So please begin once the sergeant at arms has started the timer and given you the cue to begin. Council members who have a question for a particular panelist should also use the Zoom raise hand function and I'll call on you in order. At this point, we will hear testimony first from uh, Sharice, Sharice Palomino of New Yorkers for Parks, followed by Neil Weisman.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharice Palomino and I am the Director of Advocacy and Programs at New Yorkers for Parks. We are a founding member of the Playfair Coalition for Parks, the Playfair for Parks Coalition, which includes over four hundred organizations across the five boroughs, many of whom will testify today. Thank you to the City Council Committee on Parks and Recreation for inviting us to speak about our city's recreation opportunities and centers. I would also like to take the time to thank Chair Ku for his leadership and his partnership in the Playfair Coalition and for raising these important issues. The New York City Parks Department operates and maintains fifty nine recreation centers across the city, across the city to serve a population over eight million people. Of the fifty nine community board districts, twenty six don't have a New York City Parks Recreation Center within it, meaning that forty four percent of community boards don't have a recreation center. New York City's recreation centers used to serve as community centers with programs for youth and seniors alike. Unfortunately, New York City's networks of recreation centers never recovered from the steep cuts to the Parks Department in the nineteen seventies and eighties. They should provide critical opportunities for youth development and empowerment with free programming and sports. They should provide older adults opportunities to socialize and be active, which is essential to their overall well being. Instead, New York City's recreation centers are chronically understaffed and badly in need of repairs, with roughly one third of them closed at any given time. Now is the time for transformative investment in our park system. One percent of the city budget for parks could ensure that recreation centers are fully staffed and functioning to provide the programming that New Yorkers need. New York City Parks Department does a valiant job maintaining these aging resources, but needs more funding to do so. This is one of the many reasons why New Yorkers for Parks and the Playfair for Parks Coalition are calling for an increase in the parks budget to one percent of the city's budget. I'll call the majority of the incoming city council members and current council members support along with the incoming mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we'll now move on to our next panelist, uh, who's Neil Weisman, who will be followed by Jessica Burke.
Starting time.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Neil Weisman. I head up Complete George, two hundred organizations and communities calling on the Port Authority to widen bike paths across the George Washington Bridge. I'm also a past president of New York Cycle Club. Today, I would introduce the Grayways Proposal to Connect City Parks with five hundred miles of recreational bikeways. My extended remarks, uh, which I've submitted, include fifteen suggested routes through the four boroughs plus a draft council resolution. Grayways aggregate separated paths, on-road bike lanes, low-volume secondary roads and low-traffic industrial areas. Destinations feature local food stops and nearby parks to facilitate outdoor but outdoor dining. The Grayways Proposal supports core park initiatives. By highlighting scenic vistas and landmark neighborhoods, we blur the boundaries between parks and their environs, which is the objective of Parks Without Borders. Like Walk to the Park, Walk to a Park, Grayways enhances resident access to green space, not just to local parks, but to facilities throughout the city, including marquee projects funded by the Community Parks Initiative. And in so doing, it will help reduce disparities in park funding, park funding by expanding the constituency for each facility. Collateral beneficiaries include the city's eight hundred thousand cyclists who have few venues to ride that aren't crowded by pedestrians and runners and neighborhood food vendors see a surge in customers. Grayways can be implemented quickly and cheaply simply by hosting GPS data on parks and DOT websites. As routes gain acceptance, they can be upgraded with safety improvements and signage. What's needed is for the council to make the ask. I welcome the opportunity to do an extended presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Jessica Burke, who will be followed, uh, who will be followed by, pardon me for one second, who will be followed by Michael Schnall.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ku and committee members. I am the president and founder of Friends of Porshaun and John Golden Park. We help MIC parks with stewardship of the twelfth largest park in Queens, Porshaun Park. It is over sixty acres large and it includes John Golden Park, O'Rourke Playground and Golden Pond. As a park in Northeast Queens, we do not have any recreation centers in our district. The closest one is four point six miles away in downtown Flushing. There is a nearby pool in Flushing, but at an initial investment of sixty seven million dollars, it is now crumbling and closed since January twenty twenty. In place of recreation centers, our district and community uses utilizes outdoor parks. MIC Parks works with private partners to bring outdoor recreation to the parks. This is not done in equal ways. Senior fitness programs that should ideally be held in areas with higher populations and percentages of seniors are not and instead are held in areas with established conservancies or friends of groups. We are grateful to the funding that Councilmember Blone and City Council Speaker Johnson have provided for programming in our parks. This includes movies under the stars. Sometimes events that are within the parks, such as the Playmobil, are seem to be planned at the last minute. This means that established groups like mine are not told until about forty eight hours before the event. Our group has been able to work with our park administrator to bring a yoga instructor, uh, sorry, a yoga instructor to our park. This only happened because our group had ongoing programming and had started a relationship with one of the yoga instructors. She was excited about bringing programming to the park and it's something that our group was able to do. This honestly is at a bit of a risk to our small group like ours as we do not have insurance. Once again, there is a public-private partnership that City Park, that New York City Parks has where you can obtain grants to pay for yoga instructors. But these grants do not really provide everything that this small group needs. This is why we're looking to have more programming in parks that is administered by New York City Parks. We are lucky that our park administrator put the yoga instructor in touch with New York City Parks and she is currently working with them to become a yoga instructor through New York City Parks Summer Fitness Program. Thank you very much for your time and thank you to everyone at New York City Parks for your ongoing work and dedication to fitness and outdoor recreation in our community.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Schnall, uh, who will be followed by David Small.
Starting time.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Mike Schnall. I'm here of submitting testimony on behalf of my colleague David Ludwig, who serves as the Senior Director of Community Programs and Government Affairs at Asphalt Green. He would, if he was here, he'd say thank you for the opportunity to testify before the Committee on Parks and Recreation on access to recreational programs and facilities. Asphalt Green is a nonprofit organization committed to providing access to sports and fitness opportunities for all New Yorkers. And as a nonprofit, they foster a love of physical activity with a focus on providing positive experiences in sports and fitness for young people to develop skills and habits that will help them lead healthy, active lives. Asphalt Green manages a multimillion dollar budget with five hundred plus employees across their two Manhattan campuses, where they operate world-class aquatics, sports, fitness programs to which we ensure access through over four hundred thousand dollars in annual scholarships. We extend our reach beyond the campuses through a variety of free community programs that impact tens of thousands of children in low-income neighborhoods across New York City. These include waterproofing, a learn-to-swim program that has taught thirty five thousand public school second graders to swim since nineteen ninety four, a recess enhancement program, which ensures daily physical activity for tens of thousands of children, and community sports leagues, which gives seven hundred and fifty children per year the chance to represent their school in sports teams. The world needs sports and fitness now more than ever. The Aspen Institute recently released physical activity trends during the pandemic and found youth of all ages are half as active as they were prior to the pandemic. As New York City continues to reopen, Asphalt Green's vision is to rebuild our community impact to pre-pandemic levels and beyond. We are excited by the possibility of providing world-class, world-class athletic programming in parks across the entire city. And as the next mayoral administration takes shape, we'll be talking with our partners at New York City's Parks and Recreation, Department of Education and individual council members to determine how and where Asphalt Green can make the most impact in a, in the needy's communities. I also just want to say a shout out to Sharice Palomino and the folks at New Yorkers for Parks and the incredible work they're doing. And thank you for the time to testify today.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Small, who will be followed by Jackie Painter.
Starting time.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm new at this. Okay, this is David Small, a resident of Red Hook, Brooklyn. Um, our, our recreation center has been closed for over a year since the start of the pandemic. And we had the um, the free membership, well, which I was just talking about a while ago to sign up, which I did. And being that I'm a retired supervisor driver, uh, for health, for health reasons, the recreation is very important because I can't walk as good and I can't stand up on my feet. So my doctor, my physician, don't want us sitting in the house, but we've been sitting in a, we have nowhere else to go other than a recreation center and it's been closed for almost approximately two years. So when we finally did get to sign up, now they say because of IDA, which happened in August, I believe, late August, that the gym is, they don't have no heating and they was waiting on the boiler. And I want to know how long does it have to take to get the boiler, a temporary boiler fix up in it, put in there? And basically, we have to travel to Sunset Park, which is two buses. And really, it's a, it's a long ride on the bus and then you got to walk up the hill to get to the facilities, two long blocks. And, you know, we just want to know how long we have to wait to get this Red Hook Recreation Center open. It's very key to the area, to the community as well. We need, we need answers. We not getting the answers that we need. We're just getting run around or I don't know. So it would be very helpful if y'all could give a definite timeline. When does it uh need to be open that has already been closed for approximately almost two years at the start of pandemic? And thank you and I appreciate everything y'all doing today.
Thank you. We will forward your question uh to the, to the post department and get an answer to you by email.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Our next speaker, who is currently our last registered speaker, is Jackie Painter.
Starting time.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you uh to the Chair and thank you to the committee for all your work. Uh, I, I'm also a resident of Red Hook. I am the founder of Red Hook Relief, a mutual aid organization and a former city council candidate for District Thirty Eight. I also want to speak on the importance of the Red Hook Recreation Center. As I'm sure a lot of you know, Red Hook is very, very prone to floods, to devastation. Not only Hurricane Sandy, but now we have our rec center closed because of a hurricane. And honestly, it's extremely sad that we're not putting, that the city isn't putting in the money to invest in a low-income community like Red Hook. In the past two years, because of construction, the neighborhood of Red Hook has lost over four hundred and fifty seven trees. Our outdoor parks have been closed because of toxic soil levels. And uh, we have last mile trucking facilities popping up all throughout the waterfront in our neighborhood. So we need this recreation center now more than ever, especially as my neighbor who previously spoke just mentioned, with this free membership, it is going to, it will, it would have really helped out our neighborhood. It really would have helped out our seniors. As mentioned before on this meeting as well, their gym memberships are actually pretty pricey and the city offers these rec center gym memberships at a super affordable price. That's very, very important to keeping a neighborhood and a community healthy, especially one with a very high asthmatic rate like Red Hook. And like previously mentioned, they want to forward people onto the Sunset Park Recreation Center, which takes about an hour to an hour and a half to get to from the Red Hook Recreation Center and is pretty much impossible for anyone with mobility issues or who may be elderly. I want to implore, implore, implore the city council to please continue funding these centers. Please make sure there is money in this budget to repair this boiler in the Red Hook Recreation Center and continue this amazing service that we have that's needed now after COVID more than it's ever been needed before, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll do it, yeah.
Thank you very much, I do see we have a question from Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Jackie, can we, can I ask you a question about the Red Hood, the Red Hook Recreation Center, what is Parks telling you about the renovations or when it will, it will be back online, the rec center?
Yeah, well, what we're hearing right now is that there isn't enough money to replace the boiler and that it's most likely just going to be closed in our neighborhood. And there's a big possibility that it'll be closed indefinitely. Because as they have looked, I guess, at the repairs of the boiler, they have also noticed some other repairs from the flooding that need to be made. So that's all, that's really all we know right now and no one was really informed of its closure, we all just kind of found out last week.
Chair, we should get some answers to that, these questions as to when and how much and these are important, we're not just going to give up on that rec center, are we? So I think, is anybody on from Parks that could answer Jackie's question? Council, is there's anybody?
Yeah, we'll do that, yeah, we, we, we are.
But, but, but Chair, did, did Parks leave any representative on this call?
Yeah, they have a representative.
All right, can we get an answer, can we, can they answer us?
I don't know whether they have access.
They're currently not on the Zoom call, the councilor.
Well, nobody from Parks is on the Zoom call, they couldn't leave somebody to hear the advocates?
They're watching it, yeah.
They're watching, but can they answer, well, you know, that's important. No, okay. Oh, well, Jackie, I'm very sorry that Parks did not have a representative that can answer a question. But we'll try to, you know, Chair, we'll try to get that, that answered right away.
We'll get the question, we'll get the answer for you, yeah.
All right, thank you, thanks, Chair, thank you, Jackie, thank you, David.
Thank you, Jackie was, Jackie Painter was our last registered panelist, but so as of now, if there are any panelists who had signed up to testify who have not been called, please use the Zoom raise hand function and I'll call on you to speak. There are none at this point, so I will turn it back to Chair Ku to offer any closing remarks and to adjourn the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So this is our last Parks Committee Oversight Hearing of the season. I want to take the time to thank my committee staff for two years. Especially Chris Sotobi, moderator today, Patrick Muhill, Trima Obi Cherry, Monica Bujar. Thank you also to our data team, Nick and Rose, our community engagement liaison, Frank Paris, our lane use liaison, Chelsea Kelly, and our press liaison, Water Chi. Thank you also to the council's Infrastructure Division leadership, including Tessa LaSalle and Bray Wee and to Jeff Baker, the council's Legislative Director, and also to Megan Chang and Laura Popper, who have since left the council. And of course, thank you to all of you, all the advocates. None of these hearings would have been possible without the great work that all of you do and continue to do behind the scenes. Everyone, thank you to everyone for all you have done on behalf of our city. With that, I will close this meeting.